And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for remotely attending tonight's city council meeting. The camera in the council chamber is set up to show those attending person tonight. The platform we are using has a raised hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address city council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America. To the republic of which this stands. One nation, united in its own. Kathy, would you please follow along?
Mayor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Dillabah.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Here.
Counselor Rees.
Here.
Counselor Scamperly.
Here.
Quorum present.
We have two presentations tonight. The first presentation will be from Mark Mashoff from PMHB and Company CPAs TC regarding the 2020 audit. I abbreviated your name.
You did. Thank you. I'm Newson Gil. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We have the audit presentation for the 2020 year end. And we went through this in great detail with the Audit Committee back in July. I think we took almost a couple of hours to go through all 60 pages. So at that time, we did quite a deep dive into the report itself. So tonight, I kind of hit the high levels. If there's any questions, always feel free to contact me or ask me tonight, but we're always here for questions. So that being said, on page one of the four-page handout I have, right there is the audit sections. Just to let you know, again, that audit is 60 pages long. The first section is our independent auditor's report. That's where we provide our opinion, and we'll talk about that in a second. The next section is the management's discussion and analysis. And that's something that management writes up for us. And that's a good section because it's comparative. It's the only place in the audit where it shows last year's numbers with the years before, 2020 and 19. So it gives you a good place to see the ups and downs and what went sideways. The financial statements themselves, there's two sets of financial statement presentation. There's one for the government-wide statements, and that's everything. All your long-term assets, all your long-term liabilities are included in that. A lot of huge numbers in there and a lot of estimates for long-term liabilities. And then your other financial statement presentation is the fund statements, which are probably more involved with and important about the budget and that kind of a stuff, okay? That's all just your current income, your current assets. The notes of the financial statements, they're quite lengthy. They provide details on your fixed assets, your debt, your pension, your accounting policies, everything that's in the financial statements. So there's pretty good backup for the numbers in those notes. Then you have some required supplementary information, which is required by GAAP, and some supplementary information, which is just in there for the reader for more purposes and more detail. And then the last section is our auditor's report on internal control and compliance. This audit is in accordance with government auditing standards, so we do provide a second level of looking at certain things. We have a report on that also. So our summary of our independent auditor's report, this is not any different than what you've seen in prior years. It still lists the management's responsibilities, the auditor's responsibilities, then our opinion. The management responsibilities, again, no change, is to prepare and present the financial statements in accordance with GAAP and to also design and implement and maintain internal controls, okay? Our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements based on what you've given us and to plan and perform our audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. And then our opinion, in fact, is that's what it says. The financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with GAAP. So that's a clean and modified opinion on your financial statements. Okay? Page two here is, I've summarized the balance sheet of the governmental funds. You see your assets, you have your unrestricted cash, your restricted cash, your taxes receivable, your other receivables, which is mostly the water and sewer receivables. Your due from other governments of 1.9 million. A million of that is for the IDA grant, the new building, okay? And then some other assets, some smaller things. So your total assets in the general fund is $7.1 million. And your liabilities for the general fund is $3.1 million, which leaves you with a fund balance at the end of 2020 of $4 million, okay? The big thing in the capital fund, $18 million no payable, that's the construction loan for the wastewater treatment plant. Okay, right now, it's just in construction phase, and I believe it's 0% right now. But of course, when that gets put into permanent financing, you'll have an interest rate there, okay? So that's your fund balances and your assets and liabilities. Page three, this is your revenues and your expenditures. The general fund had total revenues this year of $14.6 million, total expenditures of $13.6 million, leaving a revenues over expenses of $997,000. You throw in some operating transfers, and the general fund increased by $1.4 million in 2020. Started the year at $2.5 million, you added $1.4 to it, and you end up with $4 million in fund balance. And the revenues and expenditures, there's nothing really wild that you haven't seen in prior years. Everything's pretty consistent, okay? Page four is our required communication summary. This is a three or four-page packet that you guys all have. And it's just the items we're required to talk to you guys about as the city council. One, your new accounting policy this year is fiduciary activities. Gatsby that came out doesn't really affect your financial statement. This is a new pronouncement, and you are following all the new pronouncements, so you're up to date with everything. Your accounting estimates, most everything in the financials is black and white, but there's a few estimates there. One is your accrued pension and OPEB obligations for your long-term healthcare and your long-term pension obligations. They go up pretty much forever. And then your valuations of accounts receivable and government receivables, that's based on past history, things like that. Although I think your receivables are pretty much fully collected by a few months after the end of the year. And then again, the useful lives of fixed assets. We put lives on those, they may last longer or shorter than what they're assigned by accounting policies. There's no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. There were a few misstatements, not really misstatements, but things that just seem to be moved around geographically for the most part. So those were all posted. There were no disagreements with management, none of the accounting, reporting, or auditing mattered. The management representation letters is part of the audit that has been signed by management and given back to us. Then there were no consultations with other accountants. If we did give you an adverse opinion or something like that, you could ask another accountant for their opinion. But your opinion was clean, so it's really not applicable here. And our last audit report is on the internal control and compliance. On the internal control, we did not find any material weaknesses. We did find a couple of deficiencies that we put in the report that management's responded to, and that's just for some improved segregation of duties for vendor payments and for the processing of payroll, okay? And we've had discussions about those. And then as far as compliance with grants and things like that, we did our testing of the grant compliance, and we found no instances of non-compliance. Okay, so there's a clean report there. You've got a lot, a lot of pages in there. If you read them in more detail, any questions, feel free to let me know. Any questions on that stuff?
I look them over and over, and I have a headache.
You have a headache, okay.
But it's really.
And then put you to sleep first?
I woke up, then what the headache? No, I'm just kidding. It's really exciting, you know? It's good numbers and, you know, and our fund balances on option, you know? I mean, it's basically a third increase in that.
Yep. Yeah, the fund balance, just before I come out here, going from 2016 through today, it was $620,000, and then in '17, $1.1 million, and '18, $2.2 million, '19, $2.5 million, and then $4 million now. So you're, that helps your interest rates and everything else.
When you talk about accrued pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities, like I understand, you know, we provide healthcare when people retire. Are there other pension liabilities?
There's the pension and the healthcare.
And what's our liability in terms of the pension? I thought the pension was a state pension. Do we continue to pay for?
You pay annually every year for the pension expense based on the actuaries. But then, as part of the accounting guidance, you take all of your employees today and your retirees and extrapolate things based on discount factors, ages, mortality tables, things like that. And you take a full liability from today until this determine the last person's around. That's what that big, huge liability is, if that makes sense.
But we, okay, so yeah, so they want, they want to demonstrate the liability doesn't affect their, our financials.
It doesn't affect the fund financials that we read, but it affects the other set, the government-wide with the long-term liabilities.
In terms of, in terms of an annual expense for retirees, is it, is there more than just the healthcare costs?
There is the healthcare, and I believe that is it for the retirees.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yep. Thank you.
Yes, names. Anyone else?
On page 10, just to follow up with that if I can, on page 10, the net pension liability increased 70%.
Page seven of the financials, Mike?
I'm looking at the financial statement. I'm looking at the, at the big one.
Yes, the net pension liability.
The pension liability.
Yep, it started at $2.7 million, ended the year at $9.2 million. That was an increase of $6 million or a 70% increase. But I will say that that number bounces around pretty, pretty widely from year to year. It might go up 50%, down 50%. It depends on discount factors and market performance in the financial sector and things like that. And it goes out, Mike, for 40, 50 years, that liability.
Okay, Mike. Thank you.
In terms of annual pension costs, at one time when the economy was good, the state paid the entire amount, and local governments didn't have to contribute toward pensions. We do now, and it's pretty significant, I believe. You ever hear them talk of going back to the other way? You haven't heard anything about that?
None.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about it.
No.
I don't. I think, I think they're overall.
But this, New York State is in good shape.
Yeah, they're doing well. That's why I'm wondering why there hasn't been local government saying, you know, why don't you pick up more costs because, you know, your investments are doing so.
Yeah, not quite 100% funded still, but they're in a high range. So their assets are still less than the liabilities.
Okay.
But it's pretty close. Email that to Longo, the Thomas Towne Apolines report. He expects a 28% decrease in employer contributions for state pensions. Is that correct? I have not heard that. Okay.
Those are for tier five and tier six employees. As far as dependents in the state retirement system, they'll see a decrease in their, their contributions.
Anyone else?
Another, another quick question while I'm there on page 10, judgment and claims. 50% increase in judgment and claims, can we, can we get an explanation for that?
Yeah, most all of that, if not the entire thing. The county has a, a fund or a trust, if you will, for workers' comp. And what that number represents is your portion of the workers' comp liability for future judgments and claims. Again, nothing that's going to be paid today or tomorrow. But again, they take all the claims open, and they do an actuary determination of what the liability might be. And it has been going down significantly, significantly over the past four or five years. And this year, it took another big jump up. I think it was as low as $1 million a few years ago and as high as about $4 million a number of years before that. So that's an estimate for your future and current workers' comp claims.
And you could explain, you know, what fund balance is. It's not, it's not cash, it's not like we have $4 million in the bank. If you can elaborate on that a little bit.
The fund balance is the difference between your assets, which is cash and receivables and everything like that, and your liabilities, your payables and things. So you're right, it's not all cash, and it's not all available, although most of it is. So it's not cash today, it's not cash tomorrow, it's a moving target.
Did you notice if we're doing better on our, our debts and our bonds?
The bonds are being paid, the serial bonds are being paid on time. There was a TAN, a tax anticipation note of $1.4 million that was paid off in 2020. And then you have a BAN, bond anticipation note of $1.7, that started the year at $2 million. So yes, your debt is lower in those two areas from year to year.
And then, then that bond anticipation, who was that for?
That's a renewal every year for cash. Like this renewed pretty much every year. Then after. Five years, it has to be turned into something permanent.
Do we still need that?
I, I don't know that.
Up to Angel. We did make a payment of $300,000 on it.
Yes, you renewed it at three, with a $300,000 payment, yep, to lower it from two to 1.7.
Thank you.
We're getting there.
You're getting there.
We're getting there. Thank you.
Okay.
Our second property.
For those should be accessible for members, a summary to update you. And specifically, as you all know, received a 2019 consolidated funding application grant award from Department of State to develop a strategic, strategic marketing plan for the city's waterfront Brownfield Opportunity area. We are contracted right now with Vida Nova, who's assisting us with that grant. And the first property that was selected to focus our marketing efforts on was the city-owned Diamond property. So Vida Nova compiled a list of, of developers within a 200-mile radius, and that was sort of our target audience for this particular site. We developed and collected aerial footage, drone footage of the Diamond site, as well as the surrounding properties and other key sites. We updated market information and demographic information on the city. And we released the RFP on July 12th. The RFP was submitted to 25 developers that requested RFP. We, the RFP, we also developed a data room that contained large technical files on the site, including previous environmental investigations, the site management plan, the record of decision and documents like that. We developed a one-page fact sheet that was presented to council in early August, and that was also made available on our website, as well as the website that was developed or has been developed to supplement the RFP process, which is OgdenburgWaterfront.com. Specific to the Diamond process, Vida Nova reached out to developers. Over 150 calls were made following up, answering questions and providing additional information regarding the RFP and the Diamond National site. There was a virtual information session that was recorded and then is available on the website on October 10th. And then that resulted in two proposals that were received on September 20th. The city right now is in the process of reviewing those proposals in detail with both amongst the management staff, as well as with assistance from the consultants. We have reached out to both of the proposal, proposers and asked for additional information and requested detailed meetings with them in early October. And it is our intention to bring back a set of recommendations to city council at the October 12th meeting. So that's a high-level summary of the work that's been done thus far and where we're going and hope to be by early October.
Sounds awesome.
Yeah, it's very exciting. We're happy to get the response that we did, following this up with the, the efforts to market the 17 Main Street property. It makes a lot of sense, so the same consultant group is, is helping us with that effort now. So very encouraged by the response.
What do they, what do they have to do with this, that part?
Vida Nova is also helping us, 17 Main Street is part of this collective effort to market Boa properties. So we're working right now to develop an RFP very similar to what we used for the Diamond process, although council.
I didn't hear what she said.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Thank you. I mean, very good work, thank you.
Thanks, did you have a question?
I just had a general question for, for Steve, I guess. So is there, is there, I mean, there's nothing in local law that says you can do an RFP and sell it that way. I don't know that there's anything in state law. So I'm wondering how we're operating and what our liability is on both of these projects. I'm legitimately concerned with that because you do end up in a situation where, you know, you have multiple proposals and, you know, someone's a winner, someone's a loser. And there's, there's everything from the sale price to your ability to actually go ahead with what you, you know? So it is very subjective, and I guess I'm just. So we, we walked through this process with a consultant, city attorney, and I've talked about it on a number of occasions. I think Counselor Reese, probably it's more accurate to say at the moment, it's more subjective than you would expect. But I would say to you, from my observation, when we bring this to you, it, it won't be that subjective. The criteria that we laid out are pretty straightforward. The things that we're looking for, the weighted values, et cetera. So I, while I would say it's definitely more subjective than doing an auction, it, it isn't, it isn't totally subjective. It's, it's a pretty objective process. I think that we're using the word subjective because we're looking at criteria that aren't necessarily, again, a monetary value or just using a timed execution. So I think, excuse me, when we bring it back to you, you'll see the recommendation. But I'll also have the, the backup from the city attorney demonstrating that we are following the rules for, for disposing of property in this manner. And in his opinion, I won't speak for that, but I've already got him engaged in that so that you've got that. But I, I believe that we're operating well within the law. And again, that's why I said to you last meeting, we talked about it. I think probably the biggest thing is making sure we're being consistent. That's why I was cautious of come up with yet another way we would be disposing of property other than what we're doing now with this RFP process. So I think that we are doing that for certain, staying consistent with using this. Certainly, anything is challengeable these days. I don't, I wouldn't want to, wouldn't want to dissuade anyone from thinking that nothing is completely bulletproof from a legal challenge. But I think we've, we've done our best here to, to bring these proposals into the city. And I think really what we're looking for, again, and I would just characterize our, our subjectivity as we're, we are just interested in getting something, getting something going. I think that's probably the, one of the heaviest weights for us will be the proposer demonstrating their ability to, you know, to execute in a relatively quick, quick fashion, so.
Kathy, Counselor Powers, I need to log out and log back in. He said that the audio and the video was lagging. He's still in market the podium. So he was logging out and logging back in. If you see him, let him in.
Counselor Powers, I do see that you're here. Can you hear me?
I can. The audio, the audio is very delayed, and it's, it's sketchy, it's all over the place. And the video's kind of askew as well. I'll do my best.
I noticed that we lost, we lost your video as well. Is it better now?
No.
Did you want to try to log out and log back in?
I already did. I can try again.
We're hearing you fine, sir, but you're getting a lag on your end?
Yeah. It's hit and miss. Kind of all over the place. At one point, I had Mark still standing at the, or Andrea was at the podium, but Mark was still speaking.
Yeah, so it would be interesting if the attorney's, you know, he's got something in writing or case law or there's a second. I've heard of like industrial development agencies, state authorities, the state doing RFPs, but I've, I never heard of municipalities, but you know, it might be all.
Also, we have the, the consultant provided us information. They've, they've used this process before. I mean, we're going on a recommendation from their, their past experience, so. But I'll, I'll get to you to what I have, and then as we move forward with the recommendations, the legal, legal opinion will, will come forward with our recommendation.
And I asked on 17 Main, did I copy the, the letter go out? I didn't get it, so I sent nobody else, but I found my copy. And, you know, in regards to 17 Main Street and the previous offer that we had, and, and all members of council were copied on it, so everybody did get a copy. And I just wanted to, I'll give Kathy a copy so that she can pass it on.
Thank you.
We do have one public hearing tonight. It is a public hearing regarding a local law to amend the city charter and administrative regulations to relinquish the city tax foreclosure responsibility with the intent that of all foreclosure responsibilities evolving to St. Lawrence County. And I will open that meeting to public hearing right now. If anyone's attending remotely, use the raise hand feature, please.
I do not see any hands raised. No one.
So if you do want to speak on this, use the raise hand feature, and you have five minutes. Okay. Our third is forward hearing closed. So this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, anyone attending remotely with that to address council, please use the raise hand feature.
The first individual is registered as Scott McRoberts, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. It appears your line is open, sir.
Good evening. I'd like to discuss a recent article in the Waterhull Daily Times from September 15th, 2021. It's titled, "August Year-to-Date Sales Tax Collections in North Country Outpaced 2020." The article states that year-to-date, St. Lawrence County has collected $47.5 million compared to $38.2 million in 2020, an increase of 24.2%. In 2020, St. Lawrence County collected approximately $65.4 million in sales tax, resulting in Augsburg receiving roughly $4.2 million based on the current sales tax formula. The line item in the 2020 year-end financial highlights provided at an earlier city council meeting had the line item for non-property tax items, that's sales tax and gross utility tax, at $4,414,169. So it appears Augsburg receives roughly $202,000 from the gross utility tax. The 2021 budget for the city of Augsburg has $3,717,235 appropriated for the non-property tax items and revenues. If the current level of sales tax collection in St. Lawrence County continues through the end of the year, it would result in the total tails, total sales tax collections of approximately $81.2 million. This would equate to approximately $5.2 million for the city of Augsburg's in sales tax revenue. Tack on the gross utilities tax, and you're looking at roughly $5.4 million in, in the non-property tax item budget line. That would be an increase of over $1.7 million on the revenue side. Now, I know this doesn't fall into doom. Now, I know this doesn't fall in the doom and gloom outlook on city finances that some on council and even some city staff would like the public to believe, but I thought it was important to run these numbers by council to get their thoughts. Are you really going to sit here and tell us that we may need to cut more public safety positions? I still have not seen the answer to my question from the last meeting about the agreement between New York State, St. Lawrence County and the city of Augsburg for taking over policing activities in the city. I've read a lot of comments from the mayor and city manager, but nothing from the other side. An agreement normally takes both sides to be on the same page and it does not appear that, that, that this is the case. Perhaps you should spend a little less time making press releases and calling for resignations of personnel you have no control over, and a little more time working out these minor details. So any thoughts on the extra revenue?
Sure. No, if I may.
I, I know. I'm glad for it.
Yeah, just, just to be clear that the, the formula, I think that Mr. McRoberts is projecting would be based on if we continued our sales tax distribution, um, split the way it is now. We're certainly, we're not doing that. It's been well publicized. We're preempting. There'll be a completely different.
See, that's, that's, this is for the 2021, not for 2022. This is what is going to be collected in 2021 and it's still 6.44%, correct?
No, that's 100% correct, Scott. Yeah, but so, so what else? Well, say though is this though, you're, but we are talking about a projection. We, we, we based our sales tax, we based our sales tax projection amount of revenue based on what we thought sales tax would come in. We are running currently about 23% ahead of that. That's, that's good news. But we still have, we still have three more months of the year to go.
No, no, I totally understand that. I just wanted the public to understand that, you know, there is a positive outlook sometimes with the finances of the city. It's not all doom and gloom. That's all. So I know it's, it's year end is what will be the final, uh, the final number. It might go down, absolutely. But, uh, between, uh, the positives from the audit and, and this, it's, there are a few bright lightnings to the city's finances.
And I think, uh, I think to add to that, Mayor, just for the record, because it is important everyone understands this sales tax issue is that, the, the sales tax increase that we have seen, uh, is significant. But it also doesn't appear to be supported by any significant economic indicator. It appears to be supported by a saving amount of government money in the economy. So my projection this year was based on what I think sales tax will stay flat. Again, having the additional money, having the additional revenue from sales taxes has been good. But it, but it is not an amount of money the city should look at, at being able to continue doing for, for years to come. So, and, and again, going into, to next year's formula. So again, there's no question, I've, I've sent this to council every time we get it, the updates, uh, sales tax is doing well. That is, that is good for us. Again, we, we do have another quarter of the year to get through before we, before we count our extra monies.
No, no, I agree. You need to be conservative next year with the new formula. I just wanted to bring a positive light to something instead of always hearing the negatives. That's all. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Kathy?
I do not see any other hands raised.
And this brings us to correspondence. Do you have any correspondence?
We have one letter. Mayor, city manager and council, we would like our council, our correspondence shared with city residents. Just what point of view are the people in this great city supposed to have? It is so hard to understand and see the present split between the people of Augsburg. For those opposed to cutting taxes as it might affect the Augsburg Police Department and the Augsburg Fire Department, we understand they have been working hard and are dedicated to serving the citizens of this great city. They are, however, utilizing the greatest part of our tax dollars. Should we cut the sewer and then just dump our waste on the city streets? Should we cut the water and just do without? Should we cut the DPW further? I'm sorry. Should we cut the DPW further and let these services diminish to nothing? Of course not. That would be absurd. We should look at everything and see what we can sever with the best ease. Some people throwing insults at the present administration are doing so as they actually believe their words. However, some residents of Augsburg are doing it because they just want what is best for the Augsburg Police Department and the Augsburg Fire Department, using safety concerns and could care less what is actually best for the city. Instilling fear in our Augsburg folks is not a real caring way to go about showing you really care about Augsburg. Our city mayor is doing his best for the citizens of Augsburg, as is his duty to do so. Does anyone disbelieve this? And if so, tell us what he is pushing for that is harmful to our city. Also, our city manager is studying and looking at these situations in order to make the best possible decisions for Augsburg residents for now and in the future. If you are all really concerned citizens of this great city of Augsburg, why the hate letters, signs and fear for our citizens' safety? Our Augsburg Fire Department and Augsburg Police Department will always protect us to the best of their ability. Can we all just step back and think honestly that all this hostility is bad and we should all work together for a better Augsburg? There is so much turmoil out there that what is going on here, neighbors against neighbors, friends no longer friends, et cetera. So many Augsburg residents have been affected by the COVID virus, loss of loved ones and other tragedies. Will we ever be able to repair the damage to the reputation of the city if we don't work together? It is time to stop all the negative behavior, comments, letters directed towards our Augsburg city government. We are proud of our city. We wish good luck to those new folks running in our upcoming election in November and to those already in place. Thank you, Dean and Diane Heber.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. The claim is enumerated in General Fund number 16 dash 2021 in the amount of $647,189.31. And live warrant number 16 dash 2021, in the amount of $5,777.54. The capital fund warrant number 16 dash 2021, in the amount of $37,173.38. And community development fund warrant number 16 dash 2021, in the amount of $8,120. And community renewal fund warrant number 16 dash 2021, in the amount of $0 as audited, be in the same hereby, our order page. I so move.
Second.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
Discussion quick. Um, I noticed that we used a couple of different, um, we like Bradley, we use Reese's auto. I just want to make sure that we're still continuing to spread it out. I know Maple City just opened back up. I didn't know if there's a way we could reach out to maybe get their pricing, a new business going on that we can make sure we're using everyone. I know Reagan's has sent letters before, so I just, I always check to make sure we're kind of trying to spread the wealth.
Mayor Scully. Counsel Delva.
Yes.
Counsel Fisher.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Counsel Rege.
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly.
Yes.
Approved.
We have two appointments tonight. I make a motion to appoint Michael Weaver to fill the unexpired term of David's restaurant on the planning board. Term to begin September 27th, 2021 and end December 31st, 2021. I so move.
Let's see the, uh, let's see the proxy on that, on the planning board, Andrew.
Yeah.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Counsel Re.
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly.
Yes.
Mayor Scully.
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba.
Yes.
Counsel Fisher.
Yes.
Approved.
Now make a motion to appoint Kevin McDonough to the Augsburg Rain Bank Corporation Board of Directors. Term to begin September 27th, 2021 and end September 27th, 2024. I so move.
Second.
Discussion. Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Counsel Rege.
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly.
Yes.
Mayor Scully.
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba.
Yes.
Counsel Fisher.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to items for council action. First item of business will be read by city manager Stephen Jelli.
A local law to amend the city charter and administrative regulations to relinquish the city's tax foreclosure responsibility with the intent of all foreclosure responsibility defaulting to St. Lawrence County.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Has there been any other correspondence with the county related to this since the last correspondence went out from Coglin Gerhardt?
No, sir.
Um, hopefully, on one hand, this will relieve us, relieve us of expenditures of approximately $800,000 to the Augsburg School District and $300,000 to the county. And, and in revenue, it has possibly bringing us in over $500,000 for our. Now, you do recoup some of that. People pay late, there's interest and you do sell the property. But overall, it will be a big financial benefit to us. And I'm glad, um, we've got to moving on this.
So I, I, I am, uh, in the local law, C81 unpaid taxes, if you go down to the last sentence. The county treasurer shall, if satisfied that such account is correct, credit the city with the amount of such unpaid delinquent taxes. I guess that's just some sort of a, doesn't say paid, will pay us. It says credit. I guess it's the same thing. Maybe it's just a accounting term or something. Maybe it's standard in all other agreements.
Yeah, it's the standard language.
Yes.
Messina has been receiving approximately $550,000 and we should be in the same ballpark as them. So this is, uh, hopefully very positive. Any further discussion? Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Counsel Rege.
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly.
Yes.
Mayor Scully.
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba.
Yes.
Counsel Fisher.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city manager Stephen Jelli.
A resolution to accept the 2020 audit. Whereas the city charter requires an independent annual audit of all city accounts. And whereas the 2020 audit has been completed by Pinto, Messinski, Hooper, Van House and Company and was presented to the audit committee on July 20, 2021. Now therefore be resolved, the city council hereby accepts the 2020 audit.
I'll make a motion for this. One second. Discussion.
The only question I have is, uh, in the two deficiencies. Basically, it's the same deficiency, just two different areas, lack of segregation duties. This was brought up when, when we lost our comptroller and we got a new comptroller in terms of having a little bit of checks and balances. Are we doing anything about that?
Yes, sir. Uh, so the, the bill paying issue is, is resolved. There's at least two people looking at those, the comptroller being the last for sampling the checks. And then the pay system, um, I, we are correcting that through, um, an automated system that we've, we've owned for a little while, just haven't had, have been able to implement. So we're working on getting that implemented now. So that'll have a supervisor approving time, somebody to refine the time cards and then somebody to refine the funds. So we'll actually have three levels of certification on the, on the time.
Okay. Is that expected soon?
We have it already. Uh, we're, right now we're working on getting the implementation ready for the, for the first of the year implementation. It's going to require, if you're, if you're sitting at a desk with a computer, it's easy. If you're in the field, we're just working on the implementation, how you'll sit down, do your time card, how your supervisor will certify it, et cetera, et cetera. But we'll have it online, uh, payroll for the first of the year.
So, so we're subbing out the payroll?
It's a good recommendation.
No, sir. It's a, it is a, it's a, it's a, it's part of the suite of software we bought, uh, a number, I think a couple of years ago. We just hadn't, hadn't implemented it yet. Uh, we've, we've had it. So we're just, we're just going through the process now, getting everyone trained, uh, to get it implemented.
Like I was saying, it's a good recommendation and, um, I'm glad to see it being, uh, put into service. But again, uh, I, we have great staff and, uh, I think we're all assured that nothing that wrong has ever happened. But, uh, good to see a recommendation and a policy to make sure in the future. I'm very happy with that audit. It's, it's a big improvement on our fund balance and, uh, really glad to see. We got, we got a lot of things, a lot of things to tackle. You know, cleaning up some flight, infrastructure to continue to improve, uh, recreation facilities for our, our citizens. And, uh, it's, you know, it goes fast, but, uh, but this was a good jump in our fund balance. Anyone else? Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Counsel Scamperly.
Yes.
Mayor Scully.
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba.
Yes.
Counsel Fisher.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Counsel Rege.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrew Smith.
This is a resolution introducing an ordinance and providing for public notice and public hearing with regard to the sale of city-owned property.
And this is for the parcel on, uh, former Paper Cherry Street.
Correct.
And it becomes an easement instead of, uh, Paper Street or not.
Would you like me to read the resolution before you discuss it? Or did you want to move it?
I mean, um, so I'll make the motion based on the summary statement.
Do you want to read the summary statement?
Mayor, I need a second, please.
I'll say.
Thank you. So essentially what this, the council did vote to dissolve the Paper Street at the last meeting. So this is with regard to Paper Cherry. This resolution will establish a public hearing at the next, uh, council meeting in October. If the property is sold, we would go ahead with, um, the legal description and, and surveying of the easement. If it doesn't sell, we wouldn't invest in, in developing the easement. But it, as noted, um, this, it would be subject, a public auction would be subject to an easement. So this is calling for the public hearing. Thank you.
And, um, a couple of these have been that the minimum purchase price would to be determined. Why wouldn't we determine that before the public hearing? A reason for that? So that people have an opportunity to comment. How is it determined? Is it just?
So we talked about today, uh, that's really the reason it wasn't on here. We talked about today, certainly open to councils and, but our, Andrew and my feeling was we will, uh, set the minimum price at $2,500, roughly the amount of money that we'll have invested into doing this and, and let it go from there. I think that our minimum price setting, again, is based on the scenario and what's happening. Again, we want to be cautious not to turn our property over to somebody for little to no money, only to have to recoup and have a problem. But in this particular case, we know there's interest. So just looking to recoup the cost that the city's had. It's nothing. We were actively engaged in trying to move forward. So we've, we've incurred some costs and we'll incur some costs to do it. So again, if somebody wants it, they purchase it, um, we'll get our, our costs recouped.
Could I make a motion then to amend the resolution to have the minimum purchase price set at $2,500? That, that's what you're recommending?
Absolutely.
Then that way if you do any advertising or even legal, those people know, you know, what the minimum price is. We did that on that, that, uh, that building up there. Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to put a price on it before the, the public hearing? That, is that your motion, John?
Yes.
So can we, uh, can we have a vote Kathy on the motion to amend?
To amend. Mayor Scully.
Yes.
Counsel Dillaba.
Yes.
Counsel Fisher.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay.
Could I just ask a couple more questions? So, just driving around town, I noticed, do we own property in Plubber Hill still?
Yes.
And we've owned that for 30 years. I saw a sign there, I think in the corner of Morris and Knox.
That property is owned by the land bank, the Ogden'sburg Land Bank.
Okay.
We still have to move the motion, the original motion, correct?
Oh, yeah, we do. We just amended it. Why don't we do that first before...
Okay. Kathy, could we call a roll on our first motion?
This would be a call on the resolution as amended.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Dilliba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Approved.
And then we had St. Joe's, like in June, we talked about St. Joe's, and it was said that it would be on the next agenda. So, it's been a few months. Maybe there's stuff to do, probably a lot of other stuff to do. But are there a lot of those around? I mean, are there, like the bigger ones, like the 17 Maines, the St. Joe's? I was looking for a map. Remember, we talked about a map. You were working on a map for me for the whole council that kind of outlined, you know, all the state land, the authority land, the city land, you know?
Yep. So, and we will get a map together. But to answer your question in short, no, there's not a lot left. I think the last time we reported, I think we were down to 10 or 12, something like that. Not counting our Brownfield properties. Now, the Brownfield properties that we're working through, a deliberate marketing effort, I would say, are in addition to that. But we're really down to 10 or 12 properties. And we're working through the next, you know, course of business to try to move those along. A lot of them are insignificant, small pieces of land. But no, I wouldn't say there's a lot at all. I'd say we're down to a few. Really, the ones you just mentioned outside the Brownfield properties are the ones we're mentioning. And we'll, you know, we'll get them here as soon as we can. We can do the work to get them through.
Brownfields, I mean, we have Diamond, we have Standard Shade.
17 Main Street. And is there anything else?
The Cheese Plant Properties, which includes the former, well, that entire block. So, it's the former Club 1812, the two vacant lots adjacent to that, and then all of the nine parcels associated with the former cheese manufacturing plant.
So, all those were actually in some way, you know, shape or form at this point. So, I'd say that the rest of the list outside of the Brownfield properties is pretty small.
Did we ever take title to the former Augsberry Tank Farm property that was owned by Quanis?
Not as of yet. We just really finished up going through the review of the extension of the moratorium to determine what we can do. So, the ruling on that simply is this, we'll be sending a letter to everybody in a non... Any property that has a structure on it. So, places like the Augsberry property, we don't have any additional requirement to do their vacant land. There's nobody living on them, so it's not included in this. But we're going to do them all at once. So, roughly about 45 days from now, we say the 15th of November will be our next auction date. That will give us time to send everybody the required notice that has a property with a structure on it. If people don't reply to the notice and meet one of the requirements to continue the moratorium, then those will go through with the auction process. So, it'll be at that point, Counselor Reach, that we could, in fact, take possession of the Quanis property and the Old Augsberry property.
Is the assistance being provided by the county attorney been beneficial today? Much progress?
I would say at the moment, what we collaborated on was the Diamond National and Shade Roller property. And I would say, you know, we had a good discussion, but we, the city staff was well, you know, well ahead of the process and doing well. Andrew and I discussed that the next available opportunity will likely be this one. Again, we'll probably collaborate with them. But I think... I think I would say at this point, Andrew's got the process well on hand. There was not the... There's no secret the county had to the method they were using. They, quite frankly, were just aggressively establishing a process, and the county attorney was going after it. So, we too have been doing that over the years. But the difference in most of the properties, I think there was a lot of marketing or advertising about, they were largely petroleum properties. So, that process is fairly well-known. You've just got to use it and execute it. But as far as additional cleanup on Shade Roller, there was no additional, you know, magic or process coming there that we weren't already doing. So, but I do think the collaboration is good for no other reason than, you know, the city of Ogden'sburg is within St. Lawrence County. So, these properties getting back on our tax rolls, putting back on their tax rolls. So, we will be looking, as we embark upon the next one, where could the county provide some assistance? You know, whether it's legal supports, et cetera, you know? Is there places we could use assistance that we may otherwise have to pay for it? Again, it's in every bit, in the county's interest to get these back in the tax rolls. It is ours. So, I think the collaboration and the awareness has been good. And we'll see. The Augsberry property will likely give us our next opportunity to see if the county wants to engage in helping us do this. It'll be my intent to, once we understand the scope and what's required there, you know, to ask council, to ask the county to contribute to those efforts towards cleanup costs, study costs, et cetera.
I'd love to see that GIS map too, and to have GIS system do the calculation based on, you know, the amount of landmass in the city that is in state control or the city, you know, not based on assessment, but based on the actual, you know, the area. You know, what percentage is actually privately owned and paying taxes versus, you know, completely off the tax rolls that we're working on and we're doing a good job on. But I'd love, I'd like to see that map, and I think it would be intriguing for the whole council.
Yes, sir.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the engineering report and execute the New York State Ready Program dispersment agreement for combined project SJ19302. Whereas the city of Ogden'sburg has been awarded a total of $8,316,973 in New York State Resiliency and Economic Development Initiative Ready Grant Funding. And whereas on November 25, 2019, the Ogden'sburg City Council approved the issuance of a bond in the amount of $415,849 to cover the city's 5% local matching funds. And whereas on July 13, 2020, the Ogden'sburg City Council approved a contract for Ready Project Engineering with Ramble Company, who has since submitted engineering reports for Ready Project SJ19302, which is the combined project for SJ239, SJ158, and SJ01, complete with an engineer's estimate for implementation and draft joint application permit documents. Now, therefore be it resolved that the city manager is authorized to accept the Ready Engineering and project budget of $6,400 for core resiliency items for SJ19302 and execute the grant dispersment agreement for the release of funds from New York State on behalf of the city of Ogden'sburg. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Both of these have an expenditure required of the 5% match that was budgeted, but we can't spend that on both projects. Is that just the way it has to be written? You know what I mean? Like, you haven't broken out here? So, I didn't know what the match was for each one individually, or why are they both say 415?
That's the city's combined 5% match. There is a 5%. The grant covers 95% for... Right.
Yeah, it's just a smaller match for the 6 million than the 8 million, but that's fine. I understand it. It's just... That's fine. Are these the final engineering reports?
These are the 90% reports. This is what we have to get to in order to submit our permits to the permitting agencies. And then we may have to make revisions based on what the permitting agencies come back at. But essentially, these are the completed reports. Yes.
Okay, so I sent an email today. Did you guys get it?
We did, and I think your point was taken, Counselor. The important thing to note is, in this project is the, let's call it the foundation, the anchor, the sheet pile is in there. I think what you sent us were pictures of those brackets, which are kind of an accessory piece of it, if we got the docks. But the important part to note is the sheet pile is there, which provides the anchor and the foundation. Should at some point council decide to, you know, put in the floating docks, it's there to attach to. If we weren't putting that in there, then it wouldn't have it. So, I think, and unless I missed what you sent me today, I understood, I don't think we'd want to install brackets, you know, without something being hooked to them. But the foundation, you know, the ability to add the floating docks by putting that sheet pile in there is there.
I see that, and I just think, when we're having a conversation with the engineers, I ask that they put something in there so that we would prepare for that, to save money later.
I think, again, the sheet pile is there. To attach an accessory that would sort of be flopping in the wind, if you will, I don't think it would really have any benefit. In fact, it would likely just get damaged. I don't think there's anything else other than that sheet pile hooking up now would be helpful. It's a, right now, it's an estimated $760,000, you know, ad to do that. Again, I think, I feel like what you're driving at is there, and if we were not putting the sheet pile...
I'm not talking about the big long things. I'm just talking about a bolt to hook up to. It's all anchored in the concrete behind the sheet piling.
Yeah, so they would anchor into the sheet pile.
Right. While this project is being developed, so that in the future, you know, it's there. And so that if we want to install the dock, I mean, I just, I can envision right now, well, you know, we're going to have to tear the supporters.
No, no.
That's the way government works.
No, because I think we've, again, these engineers knew what we were trying to do. That's why I say, again, if we were sitting here talking now about not putting the sheet pile in, I would say that would be one thing. But since we're doing that, I think, again, we're providing, again, I'd call it the foundation, we can attach to that, whatever the accessory might be, if there was something else. But I think the tax system is there, so. Again, let me say this, if we move forward of this, we can certainly ensure that that's done. I know exactly where you're getting at, but I don't see us having to dismantle anything to be able to add the floating dock to it. The whole idea was it would be modular, so if we decided to do it, it's there.
And I'm, yeah, my point was, is if we put some sort of a connector right now, bolt sticking out, or, you know, a tap system, something, so that it's there.
And it will be that, though. It'll be bolt sticking out, or...
Because it's going to be inside for the bid.
Yeah. Again, I really think it's a small thing. Let me just talk to them about it. But I think more important, quite honestly, is the sheet pile could potentially become, depending on the bids, could become an object that we may not be able to afford to do. I'm much more concerned about that, so I want to move on with this process to get to the bids, to find out where, well, these engineer estimates are nice, but I need to get to the real-world dollars. Who's willing to do it for what kind of money?
So, I'm going to vote for this.
Of course.
But, I mean, the engineer at the time said, now's the time to put this in. Why not? For a minimal cost compared to trying to do it later. And so, I just don't want it to slow down the future. I mean, the whole point of this Ready Program, the E stands for economic, I mean, and trying to think about tomorrow and the future.
Yep.
And so, that was my point. So, when I didn't see it in these drawings, I said, again, you know, and I'm frustrated, so.
Understood, and, well, I'll...
When you sign the grant dispersment agreement, that obligates us to the project, right? I mean, we can't change it after the fact, once the grant dispersment agreement's in there even, you know?
Well, I don't know if that's true, but what I would say is we're not going to get any money. We have roughly right now $492,000 out on this. And so, I've got to sign the agreement to start getting some of our money back. Now, we have to go through with the project, yes. If we, it's kind of, I guess it's chicken or the egg, but maybe it's not really. If I sign the grant dispersment agreement, that's why I have this in resolution form tonight. You have to commit to doing this. There's no sense in me signing it and taking their money. If we take some of their money and don't finish the project, they'll take their money back. It's not a, you know, we'll pay you to see if you like doing the first couple of steps. So, we have to commit to this. So, there's, the reason I've given you this two-sided map tonight is because I want to make sure everyone clearly understands what we're talking about right now, which is the estimate, the amount of money we were given. If you look at the page that has really nothing on it, and I've done that for a reason, much to the displeasure of our planning director, I want to be clear about that. Andrea wants to present this in a different way, but I'm, for the reason we're talking about right now is the reason I'm doing this is I need you all to clearly understand right now what we're sizing up. We are sized up for our match, $415,849, but with the current engineer estimate, we're approximately another $500,000 over budget. Now, there is a significant contingency budget planned in there. This is an engineer estimate. I mean, it's not an absolute. But that amount I'm talking about right now will get the core portions of the project completed. You'll see what it doesn't do. It doesn't put our tennis court back. It doesn't build a gazebo. It doesn't put our playground back. It doesn't really even replace the landscaping. Andrea put those in there, but I don't think we really even get landscaping much for that. So, our money has not gone as far from the time they projected the cost of this and designed the project to where we would have liked it to go. I want to move to the next step to the bid, because I feel like we need to know. If the estimates come in less, great. I think that that'll be important. If they come in higher, again, I think council's got to figure out what we're going to do. If you flip this over, now it's, you know, got more of the items in here that we want, the finished product stuff. Here's all the things we've talked about, everything from the gazebo to re-putting the tennis courts, to the new playground, to the floating dock, and all the things we've talked about are in here. There's not really a clean path necessarily, but we are kind of at that point where we've got to make a decision. Do you want to move forward with this project the way it is? So, I'm not going to take any of their money until I get bids, because we'll have to give it back. So, I do, you know, just to make you aware, we've expended that amount of money. It's roughly $323,000 today for the project that Andrew just read. The next one she'll read is $169,000. So, we'd end up paying this $323,000 right now. And they're not going to pay for that if we don't follow through with the project. So, we've got money invested. I just need to make sure that we're all on the same sheet of music about what we're talking about here.
Absolutely. In order to do pretty much everything, we need another $3 million.
Excuse me, Steve?
To put the pavilion playground and just to do the landscaping and the tennis courts, another $3 million.
At least. Yes, sir. I mean, so 19 on the Marset Pavilion, roughly $130,000 to put the tennis courts back, 720, 760 on the dock, 720 in the playground. I mean, again, the money we're talking about now from the state in our match, right now, will cover all but, you know, right now roughly $900,000 of just the core work. Not talking about replacing anything. So, I just want to make sure we're talking about that now. Also, we don't have a gazebo right now. So, while I think we had hoped there would be more money in the fund for this when it was done, there's not. We're going to have to do something with the playground equipment. I don't, tearing that up isn't a $720,000 bill to return. I don't feel like the pickleball tennis court issue is something that's out of our grasp. We're going to have a couple of years to work through this as the project gets bid and gets going. I don't think putting that back is out of our financial resources to put our tennis courts back and landscaping. But these other segments that we want, these are significant, you know, dollars, but they're not covering. And I don't think, in a best-case scenario, what I'm hoping for is that the bids come in such that we don't have to spend any more than our committed match. But I don't think you can expect to see bids low enough to start to funding these other things. I mean, if they do, great.
Was the grant that was put out, I think it was July 13?
Yep. So, Andrew, we separated some of these intentionally, so we could start working towards these things. Like, we knew there's not an extra $1,001,001 in here to build a pavilion. We know that it's never going to get that lucrative in that fund. So, it's been separated. Andrew's working on grant funding. And again, I would say, best-case scenario, if we get this thing moving now, we'll get a bid package out. We'll get a contract that will work spring, fall of next year, so we'll have all of next year. And then even part of 2023, I would suspect to budget and plan to, you know, to do the things that we can do and continue to look for grant funding to build a pavilion, playground, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
It's a light or two.
It did. So the pavilion, as the city manager just noted, is not there now. It's an additive. It's something that we had wanted to do as part of the economic development component of this project. But in 2019, when the project was conceived of, when we were getting public feedback and developing this with the state, the numbers are just not equivalent today. So we did decide fairly early on that the pavilion was likely going to be outside of the budget of the current ready project. And we did apply to New York State Parks in July through the CFA process for funding to do a pavilion aside from the ready project. This one point one million dollar budget for the pavilion is also the high end of the pavilion. So it's a three thousand square foot pavilion with restrooms. Obviously, we could do a variation of that without restrooms. We could do something smaller. We could do different materials. So that's the high end. And the same is true for the playground. That seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars is based on the size and scale of the current Kids Kingdom. It includes that solid surface playground material as opposed to mulch. It's the high end of the engineer's estimate. Certainly, there are plenty of options to do both of those for less, including possibly using in-kind labor, volunteer labor. So those are just the high end. So to your point earlier, Counselor Fisher, adding all of these things in with the engineer's estimate to date, which may or may not be what the market tells us, could be higher, could be lower, that it is about an additional three million dollars over and above the current ready project. Right now, the ready project, when it was awarded in October of 2019, estimated that these could be paid for, and it was a ninety-five percent grant, five percent local match. That's just not the financial climate we're in right now. But we also don't know when we actually go to bid this, whether the numbers will be more favorable or not.
Yeah, my concern is, you know, you take out Kids Kingdom and the tennis courts and the gazebo, which was built by one of the clubs, I don't know which one.
The gazebo in the library park?
No, the one out on the pier.
That's being replaced. It's just having to be temporarily removed to increase the elevation. It's not being removed.
Okay. So there's. Yeah, the pavilion, okay, that's kind of an add-on. But we actually took out all the docks to try and fund the pavilion, and it's still not in there. So it's almost like we're being obligated for all these future expenses and local money. And by voting on this, it's like, get out your checkbook, because next year, you know, you have to build a playground, you're gonna have to put tennis courts in. And grant money is, you know, it's there sometimes. Always, you're not always competitive, and it certainly isn't like there, you know, they're long processes, so. If this is what you guys are recommending, I hold both of you as responsible. How's that?
And I think we understand that. One of the things, I guess, they showed us at the outset was, you know, and Andrew and I have talked about this a hundred times. It is really, and I clearly see, you know, the whole idea behind these projects is the government doesn't intend to estimate these and, let's say, quote, fix the dirt and leave you with replacing all your stuff. That wasn't the intent. It's just the way this has worked from the time we got it to now the prices have gone up. You know, things have just changed significantly with the economy and the cost. But I do think, you know, there's a reality here that this is a significant amount of grant money. I feel like there are some downsides to us, for instance, applying for a twenty million dollar DRI grant, but being on record as returning an eight million dollar grant to improve the readiness and resiliency of our shoreline. I also fully understand it's been a terribly dry year, and so you go down there and we wonder where the water went, and we're sitting here now talking about a flood. I mean, there's some optics that just don't line up to today common sense. So I understand all those things, but we did see a flood. The science tells us there will be another flood. I think it's credible what they've asked. One thing I didn't mention in my earlier comments, Counselor Reese, was the, whether we put riprap around that point there you asked about before, or we do step rock, the cost was negligible, so there's no, it's just that there's no difference in the moment. One of the things that Andrew and I would like to discuss at some point, though, is just the impact to that. Our ordinances in the city are pretty clear about, there's no place where you can jump in the water and swim. And by creating steps here, we'll create a place where people will likely want to jump in the water and swim, so that will pose as something else to have to do. And I know that sounds bureaucratic. I'm just trying to throw it out there, and that'll be one more thing. We'll build this nice stepping thing. Followed by signs that say no swimming. I'm just, but it's negligible. So I feel the conflict ourselves in making a recommendation, but I do think it wasn't a project that was recommended that has no merits. And I think it is something that protects our shoreline for the future. The high water was here, it will come back. So I don't know, I don't know where the, I don't know where the sweet spot is here, except to say, I really think, again, our recommendation to move forward, get the estimates here and come back to you and say, this is what it's gonna cost us to complete the core work. There may in fact be some additional cost other than the four hundred and fifteen thousand for the core work. And then to be able to line you out, you know, these options and say, these are what these things would cost, and then figure out how we want to go about executing some of those optional items, and then how we're gonna pay for it.
Yeah, I don't want to give the money back, but, you know, I would like to see a concerted effort where we go back and say, you know, do we have have steel pile? Because that's it's two million dollars right there. And if we didn't have to do that as part of the project, we're in a much better position to fund the amenities, which is what people. You know, I don't, you know, raising the hush in, you know, stuff a little bit, but to raise the entirety of Morset Park by two feet, aren't we stabilizing the shoreline to stop the flooding? I, you know, so there's two things where I'd at least like to see an effort to try and get those costs down.
Oh, so I'll let Andrew adjust the sheet pile in a second, but I'll say on the elevation. So the reality is, if we don't raise it all to the street, from the water to the street, we likely create a bowl effect, which probably puts us in a worse position. Water comes in, hangs in the bowl, rainwater stays there. I think, again, and we'll go back and ask, we've asked a couple of times, as you've asked us, to determine what, if any, part of the core projects were negotiable, if you will. And the answer is largely come back, they're not. This was the design. This is the design that's been approved. Again, I can certainly go back and ask again if we can sort of draw a line through there. But I think some obvious detrimental answers will come back to why they wouldn't want to do that. So can you talk about the sheet pile having benefits?
Like, say, well, sheet pile, the sheet pile, I thought it was necessary because they were gonna dredge. And now they're not dredging, yeah, and a million dollars is staying at it for dredging. Not gonna do that. Maybe it's not necessary.
So the sheet piling was requested by the city at the outset of this. It was actually requested when we were working with FEMA due to the flooding and the damage at the boardwalk during the seventeen flooding event. The engineers that we've been working with from 2017 to current, we believe there was a fault in the initial design that had the sheet piling on the inside of the boardwalk, and the sheet piling really should have been on the north side to provide the greatest level of protection to the marina, to prevent from, to protect the riprap and the subsurface structure of the boardwalk from the wave action, which is what you get from the wind and everything. And that's what actually takes all of the fines out and where you lose your stability. So if we had the sheet pile on the exterior, it does two things. One, it allows for the community to consider transient docking, whether it's immediately or at some time in the future. And then the second part of it is that it does provide additional stabilization of the boardwalk and protection for the marina. That's really why we were looking at it. Again, it was a recommendation that came out of the FEMA project, but we could not work it into the FEMA project because it's considered an improvement, and it was outside of that budget. It could not be done at that time, just because of the way that the federal process works. So for better or for worse, we had flooding again in 2019, and it came up again, and it was able to be considered as an improvement through the ready project. So that's where that comes from, and it is twofold. It is the resiliency. It is also the economic development component.
But with that being said, as we get the bids back, we're gonna have to have some kind of itemization there so that, again, just, let's say, continues to be a half million over our projected budget or a million. We're gonna have to know other things we can take out to move forward with the project. Or are we just at a point where we say, we can't afford to do this? There's nothing we can take away. The state won't let us take, for instance, the sheet pile off or something. So we are gonna ask those questions. What are the things we could take off? Because, again, we may need it just to get the core work done, so.
So we don't want to forget that along the Aspergatch River, we're short two million dollars in that time to the wall if we don't let them off.
Well, the budget that's presented there, which is, I think, three million and change. Again, that's the engineer's estimate, which includes a hefty contingency. We did get it down. It's always been about five hundred thousand dollars over budget from the outset, pretty much. I actually don't have the budget, itemized budget in front of me, but maybe the city manager. But. I believe that the project was awarded at one point nine million, when the estimate for the project was a two million dollar project. We got it to where we felt pretty comfortable that the budget was a two and a half million dollar budget. And then I think we actually scaled it back by reducing some portions of the wall to a two point three million dollar budget. That's what we anticipate, again, going into construction. That's where you get it. You get all the contingencies that the engineers add, which I do believe you're correct, Mayor, that it did get, that budget that you probably saw does reference three million and change. But keep in mind, that's inclusive of other things than just construction, also permitting and other things.
So just to summarize, the local match was four hundred and fifteen thousand. The two resolutions are five hundred and twelve thousand over budget, and they don't contain the amenities, which are the tennis courts, the playground, the pavilion, and the landscaping. So really, you're getting, so the local funds, if you did everything, those amenities are now three point, almost three point two million dollars from four fifteen, so.
I'm concerned about the money.
I'd just rather table it and, you know, let's have a letter from the state saying you can't take the steel piling out. I mean, because that seems to be the obvious answer. Then you can have the amenities, you can have the dock improvements, you can have the elevation raised. I mean, the fact, the mere fact that they're mandating that you have to raise the elevation by two feet eliminates Kids Kingdom and the tennis courts. And they're on our dime. So I just think it needs to be refined more. I don't want to rush into it, knowing that, you know, you got your approval, but all this other stuff's gonna come later, and we're responsible for it.
That's why I was very careful what we asked for going forward. I really, to me, the best course of action is we go out and we get real numbers. I honestly, if we don't, if the real numbers don't come in less, then I'm concerned that any of this will go forward. I think that's our only chance, honestly. I'm not, I don't know if council has any appetite for two, three, four million dollars of bond. I'm not saying that we shouldn't look at that at the moment. I'm just saying at the moment, I don't, I know you're not ready to sign up for that. So I'd like to go find out what real numbers are to do all this, and then come back and talk about where we are, so.
This is out of time.
Well, I mean, nobody's telling us we're over, but we're behind other people that started at the same time as us, way behind. And the fourth's finished their project. So I mean, but I think, again, we're trying to move this methodically. I'm not, there's no attempt here to get the city to sign up for anything we don't want to. I just, but I feel like what I needed council to say tonight is you understand this is what is involved. This is what we're moving forward with. We've edited the drawing to take out things that we talked about, like the road that we originally talked in there. So this is the scope, and we're done talking about the scope. Because, well, honestly, we've had enough time to talk about the scope and the design. We've got to move on. I just need to know that at least you're committed to the project. And again, I think our discussion tonight is fleshing out, what, to what level are you willing to put more money into this if we need to? If it's just a half a million dollars over, if it's another million? And then again, you know, we're going to have to find money for these other items. Again, I don't, the tennis court doesn't, I'd almost, I think we can almost X that off. I mean, in my mind, that is not significant enough money. We ought to be wasting our time talking about that too much. We've got one, close to one point one potentially on a pavilion, seven hundred and twenty, seven hundred and sixty on playground and alternate docks. And those are big-money things that we've got to get to, we're going after. I guess the question is, does council believe enough in the project to get going so we can figure out, are we gonna, are we even able to move forward with the core elements? I don't even know. If I can ask about taking the sheet pile out, my gut is the answer on that is yes, we probably can. But you are, again, now back to what I was saying to Counselor Scampere earlier, the brackets don't matter much if we don't have the pile in there. That is the money, so.
Well, it'd be nice to have piling all along your waterfront, so that you just can't afford it.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
The thing that troubles me is, like before, if we increase the elevation of shoreline, I've never seen Morset Park flooded except for when we had the high water. We had high and it, you know, and it never got back to where Kids Kingdom was. I never saw that flooded or the tennis courts. And it just seems like, it just seems like, you know, you take some of the, bringing all that dirt in and raising that whole elevation, you know, it gives us, takes the money, the cost out there where we can put it into some of these other things. But, I mean, in all honesty, Kids Kingdom, it needs to be done.
Yes.
It's way.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I think the hard part you're getting down to, and I understand this, but I assure you all, we've asked this question. Andrew and I have asked it in seventeen different directions. The design and the criteria for providing this project, the standard that they're going to follow, the hundred-year flood standard, they're not going to negotiate that. They're not, the eight million dollars wasn't for us to do as little of their work as we could. It was to maximize the amount of work. And again, the hard thing is it's not things that we can see and feel and feel like we're getting something from. This is a shoreline mitigation and flood resiliency project, and it's not going to provide what we'd hoped it for by way of improvements using somebody else's money. I mean, that, it's probably the simplest way I can put it. It's just not there. Do we want to listen to the science that says, yes, it'll flood, and yes, it will flood at some point to this level and do this? Or do we just say we don't believe it, and we move on, and we'll figure out how to, you know, pay the engineer bill and move on? I mean, that's sort of where we are.
Well, I think it's control. I think they're making it flood. I think the seaway is gonna change. And they're making the water levels low to do these ready projects right now, probably next year, too. And then we're gonna see the flooding again, so.
We saw a record-low snowpack. I mean, we won't, I mean, knock on wood, it'd be nice if that continued, but we saw a record-low snowpack. We had.
So you're just gonna get his prices in. That's all you're doing.
It's the next thing, but I just, I need philosophically us to agree we're wrong.
But let's do that. Let's get prices.
Well, we are committing by signing the grant dispersment agreement to move forward with the project as designed, right?
I'm not gonna draw money off it until we commit going forward, because we'll have to pay it back. It wouldn't make any sense for us to do that, so. We've already, we've already, we've put the money out now, so we've already.
Would it be wise, and would anybody be in favor of approving it, but take the sheet piling out?
Let me get confirmation, though, John. I just want to ask, because we did change, being on the inside versus the outside. Let me, I just want to verify that, in fact, can be taken out.
Can we table this then and talk about it at the next meeting?
We can table it, but I don't know if that buys you anything. I need to go. Uh, we can table it, but I, I don't know if that buys you anything. I, I need to go get these estimates. And I think I understand your intent tonight. I, I. I, I, I think I've always understood your intent. We're trying to keep this in budget and not, you know, spend as much of our money as we can. I'm just saying to, but we're. Outside of a miracle, there's no way we're not spending some money at some point. The question just is how much? That's, that's the question. So, so if we can take the sheet pile out, great, but the estimates come in, you know, at that five or 600,000 over, then we've only got about a million to spend. Will something else come higher? Andrew hasn't introduced the resolution. We are over budget uh, from a planning perspective on the other project as well. So again, we're, we're looking for numbers to come in affirmatively there. So even if we save it over here, we might in fact just be using it to cover the, the cost of the other, the core uh, functions of the other project. So.
Yeah, I think we're gonna, I think we need to move forward.
Yeah.
Get some numbers.
So then you can determine, is, is this important enough to, you know, to look at, are we, are we gonna? Are we gonna find a way to, to spend more money? It's just, but it's, it's, it's not gonna be all on somebody else's funds now. We're, it's a matter of how much.
So when a contractor bids on something, there's no guarantee that, you know, we, we could, we could decide, oh, thanks for bidding on the sheet pile, but we decided we're not going forward with it. Is that gonna be an alternate?
So we, we, we'll structure all this so not, not to have the city committed to anything, but what I wanna be able to do is I wanna see those costs so that we can do that. We can say. If in fact, the core work says you don't have to do this, we can say, fine, that, that was tied to this. So if the sheet pile's not. A, a mandatory item, it'll be listed in that way in the bid spec. So we can say, fine, we couldn't afford it. That's something that even if we wanna do it, we can't afford it right now. So take it off.
Well, my concern going forward here is, is, is having the state turn its back on us uh, going forward here in, in any way, shape or form. By kind of beating around the bush here, but um, you know, I'm all for the plan as it is. Um, I think, I think getting it off the ground and getting rolling is a start. Uh, and, and I, I don't think we should be uh. We should be uh, um, rather nitpicking right now. I, 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 I'm genuinely concerned if we start dicking around with the state, they're gonna, they're gonna turn their back on us and, and uh. Cause they've got a lot of time and energy wrapped up in this since 2017.
I, I, I think we already have the estimates. So the engineer's estimates, we know the cost.
We've also got a brand new administration down here. And without mining, you don't know what's gonna, what the future's gonna hold in 2022. So.
And I also do, and I mean, and there's another point to council powers. I, I don't know that. When we have concrete numbers and we're sitting here trying to figure out how to put this together and pay for it, that again, it's, it certainly would be worth the appeal to the state. Uh, the federal government, whoever uh, to, to acknowledge that uh, costs went up. Prices of materials changed, access to labor and available contractors changed. So that, again, supply and demand drove prices up. So I don't, I don't think we'd be, I, but I think. We need to be on more solid footing than, than engineer estimates. I, I, and I'm using, so we had, you know, this year, the, the cost for demolition on the. Ford Street project was, was significantly less than, than I thought it was going to be. So we were pleasantly surprised there.
What can that change?
Of course.
And with that project, there are, there are other, there are costs that, that we're now obligated for by moving forward. So this is, this is very similar to that where you don't have the money. In hand, you don't have. The budget and the plan and you're kinda doing a hail Mary and realizing that all these local funds, you know. You're, you're obligating yourself in, in a way.
If we got bids, just hypothetically, if we got bids that put us right at budget. Just, you know, best case scenario, we, we were right at budget. All we've gotta contribute is our match. We're right at budget to get the core work done. I would say that right now, I would say that's a good scenario, but we'd still have to flip this piece of paper over and figure out. You know, and go to work on paying for the gazebo, the tennis courts, the playground, whatever. I mean, I, I think under best case scenario, we're, we're, we're hunting for, for money. There's no, no doubt about that.
Well, I, I'll uh, I, I'm leaning toward, I, I, I think I'm gonna vote for the Crescent project, cause I, I think it's, it's needed, even though it's, you know. It's not in the city center or anything, but I mean, obviously there's tons of damage down there. It needs to get fixed up, but. I just can't, you know, vote for something that puts us in that kind of a situation where you're. Instead of a $415,000 local match, it's, it's really 3.1 or 3.2. Um, I just uh. John, let's go ahead.
Okay, it's time to vote, everyone? Great. Kathy, would you call the issue?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy? Yes. Counselor Powers?
Absolutely.
Counselor Reish?
No.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabah?
Yes.
Approved. Number fives.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the engineering report and execute the New York State Ready Program dispersment agreement for project SJ163. Whereas the city of Augsburg has been awarded a total of eight, 8,316,973,000 dollars in New York State Resiliency and Economic Development Initiative Ready Grant Funding. And whereas on November 25th, 2019, the Augsburg City Council approved the issuance of a bond ordinance in the amount of 415,849 dollars. To cover the city's 5% local matching funds. And whereas on July 13th, 2020. The Augsburg City Council approved a contract for Ready Project Engineering with Ramble Company. Who has since completed the engineering reports for Ready Project SJ163. Complete with the engineer's estimate for implementation and draft joint application permit documents. Now therefore be it resolved that the city manager is authorized to accept the ready. The engineering report and project budget of $3,205 for Ready Project SJ163 to execute. Grant dispersment agreement for release of funds from New York State on behalf of the city of Augsburg. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
I'll move there. Second.
Again.
Discussion. Um, this, this is a, a property that floods, you know, every year. Mistake in the eighties, putting that tail on it. And uh. Lost that historic wall on the river. Pretty sad. And I think this is gonna be uh, end up being uh, to do it right, could be up way over budget also. And I just wanna remind everybody that. You know, this is gonna be a financial obligation. And there's gonna be other things that um. City won't be able to support. And I'm gonna vote for it. So. And anyone else? Kathy, would you call the rule, please?
Counselor Kennedy? Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reish?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabah?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
Uh, does anyone have any old business?
I don't know if it'd be considered. Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I don't know if it'd be considered old business. When uh, when are we gonna be opening the chamber back up to public?
I don't know. It depends, depending on COVID.
We have every, every entity, but that room right there is open for public. Use.
Counselor Powers, we have, uh, we have city hall uh, closed. Uh, three days a week. Um, we're, we're restricting uh, access to, to appointments. Um, we're looking now at uh, what, what the rules uh, for use of the. Dubisky will be for the ice arena. So I, I think we're just uh. I, I, I feel like we're doing the same thing with last time. We're looking at the numbers, looking at the increases in cases, listening to what public health is putting out. Um. I, I see that some organizations have been a little slower to respond. I, I don't. Really understand necessarily why that is. Um, I think right now, quite frankly, we see some spikes in certain days as high as we ever saw. Uh, last spring. So I, I think we're just uh, taking precautions. So I would say the answer. Out to your question is I think when we see a significant stabilization or, or downturn. Uh, and I think if, if council like me to, to send kind of on a weekly basis, you know, what we're looking at, the information to make decisions, I can do that, but. There's no, no reason we're doing this other than just trying to uh. You know, to not, not be part of having, having spread of, of COVID.
I think if we just uh, put on some three foot guidelines, tape off. Seats require the audience to wear masks, like they do in school. Schools are working. I mean, the kids are right next to each other.
You see the infected rates and obviously for schools are highest.
No.
You didn't see it?
No.
I mean.
Check it out.
You know, I question this, this whole. I, I don't know how, how people are really being affected by it anymore. I mean, most people are vaccinated. That I, I know, I know some people don't want, that's their choice, but.
It's definitely tighter than it was a year ago.
And you have, you have many, many.
I don't, I don't see.
Vaccinated now as well. You've, you've got a high rate of vaccination amongst the public. And more importantly, you still have precautions in place that uh, that can be, that can be adhered to, such as mask wearing and, and the like, but. But uh. That's all I had.
For, for our part, I mean, we've, in, in the recent uh, weeks, we've had six employees. Uh, positive with COVID. Uh, every one of them vaccinated. It just doesn't appear to be any, any easy answer to this. And I, I agree, Counselor Scamperly, some days it does seem like if you're someplace, it's not happening, but. You look at, I look at the numbers on the television some night and I just think, you know, where, where's it, where's it coming from? But I. I don't know. I'm, again, I, when I sent you the, all the information that we were discussing doing this, I mean, I'm. I don't think there's any cut and dry formula here. I, I just don't know if we wanna wait and, and be the, be the whoops. We just went through this. We, we know. That public gatherings are spreading this. So I'll say, it seems to me that trying to rope off seats and then allow a certain number of people to attend and then standing outside, telling certain people they couldn't come in and certain people they could. And I don't know that that was real popular either. So I, I, I don't, I don't know what the, it seems like this, we've got a way for two-way communication, you know, pretty, pretty reliably. So I, I. Again, I, I defer if council has a different direction to what we're doing. I certainly will follow it.
I, I, I remember. You know, when the, the city council closed the first time. And city hall and I wasn't in favor of it. And then, then you like, you came down with COVID. You were very sick and I, and I was like. I was a little slow catching on, but to me, it's pretty obvious now and after watching it, when you went through, surprised you're not for it. Um. Any new business?
I do, yes.
Well, to, to respond to that, seeing that you've asked me a question. I, I, you know, you, you're right, you know, but I mean, you were talking about adhering to guidelines. And from my vantage point right here, nobody up there is actually adhering to the guidelines. As far as a mask, if you're, you know, if you're, if you're adhering to the city hall guidelines. It appears to me that, well, you're not wearing it. You know, but, but. I'm, I'm, I'm regardless of my position, Mike, I'm asking on behalf of the constituents. So I've got my answer. Appreciate your response.
Okay, thank you. Uh, new business, John?
Yeah, I just think that we would be remiss if we didn't write the new governor to express our. You know, concerns about uh, the two state correctional facilities in Augsburg. And um, you know, to reiterate those same concerns that we expressed to the previous governor. Um. You know, taking into consideration the economic impact that it would have on, you know, a, a rural area like this that doesn't have many jobs versus. You know, a bigger community that can absorb the losses. Um, the circumstances have also changed. We had a loss of 200 jobs at United Helpers. I mean, um, you know, closing one of those facilities would be devastating. And we also. Lost uh, 1.5 million in, in sales tax from the county. So, you know, affects our. Economic situation. So I, I was, was wondering if staff, if the council agrees would be, you know, could put something together like that.
I'm for it.
Ask her to come up and visit.
Sure. Put that in there too.
We'll, we'll draft a letter for council review and the mayor's signature.
Either that or uh, well, I'd like it to come from the full council. And um, or a resolution for the next meeting, whichever is uh, more appropriate.
We already did a resolution this year, didn't we?
So the old governor. Maybe we could send it.
It goes to the government. We sent it to the senate chamber, the assembly hall, and we sent it to the, the assembly. We sent it to the governor's office. It's still there.
Maybe they lost it, but send a new one.
They didn't lose it, they didn't, they don't lose it. They didn't. Sometimes, sometimes it's just, it's better not to bring light to certain things. When you don't understand or possibly really know the real dynamic. John, you wanna give me a call sometime? I'll fill you in on some information and maybe you'll have a different opinion after that, but. Whatever. We already have a resolution in place. The county's got one in place. The I, the IDA's got one in place.
Well, I would appreciate, Mike, if you would share that with all of us.
I'd be happy to. You know, sometime in, sometime in session, because it's information that uh, that, that's constantly moving and, and I just don't give it to you on, on, on the street. So.
His, 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 I think he's, he was always trying to be positive. You know, so if, if there is something.
I'm not doubting.
I would appreciate your help.
Um, anything for discussion?
I have one thing. Um, last time we talked about um, patrol, they're using their private phones to log their videos. Um, are we, or should we be concerned with any type of security issues as a result of that application you being used on a private phone? If those videos could be. Some um, taken or dispersed or through using iCloud. People's phones next to each other. Is there something that we should have installed or? Utilized to secure those a little better? Because I, the more I thought about that after last meeting, that can be quite concerning with the amount of what you, you can steal the information off somebody's cell phone. I mean, that's pretty important stuff. There could be pending court cases, litigations, anything like that. So what are we going to do as the government to kind of secure that information?
So we've asked Verizon uh, for what our options would be to be able to, whether we've gotta provide more phones or some kind of data storage. Um, so as soon as I get that back, we give it to Chief Kearns and then I'm. Asking him to make a recommendation.
Once they, if they have an Apple phone, they put that, that goes into their cloud and then. It can be their kid's iPad who gets left at school and somebody picks it up and then they've got access to all the information that.
Right.
Should be secured.
Yes, yes, ma'am. We're, we're working on, no, no question. Point was taken last time.
Yeah.
I, I think uh, some of this again is just the, as we're getting ramped up, you know, we got the cameras and the big hurdle was getting the cameras and finding.
No, no, I know. Like as I thought about it, the more I thought about it, I was kind of like.
I was, as the chief was briefing last time, it was, I think it was going through my, in my head too, like it's the personal, the personal phone thing again, back to.
Really, I don't care if anybody else uses their own personal phone. That's great. They get a discount and I'm not concerned about reimbursing that aspect of it. I'm more concerned about.
The data storage.
The data storage on it.
Is the chief there?
He, he is, but we, I, I've asked Verizon already. I just haven't gotten the information from Verizon as far as what we can, what we can do. As far as how we can use that, how many, what, what more phones cost us. Excuse me, except for, you know, what, what are our options to do that and then using their personal phones for the, for the problem. So as soon as I get back our options from Verizon, what the costs look like, then. I'll just give it back to him to figure out how many we need and what, what it would take to do that. I, I mean, I think Counselor Kennedy's point is, is this, and quite frankly, I agree. I don't, using something like that for personal phones is only gonna end up with somebody's personal phone. Even if it's not, somebody gets the data, I, that makes their phone able to potentially be subpoenaed or taken. Yeah, and I just. I just want, it's, it's an unintended consequence of getting these as the downloaded feature. So.
Which I think the feature's great that they can upload it. Like I love the features, the application, the idea behind it. It's just the security portion.
Couldn't you also come up with a policy and procedure that goes at the police department, that the phones are only used? Um, you know, that I deal with um, potential um, that could be taken for litigation or. Any type of criminal case that if you use it or film something from outside of it, then you're, you know, you can be.
Yes.
Brought up on charge, whatever. So that way you, you.